What's that? All right. We will call this meeting to order of the Cumberland School Committee at 7:07 PM. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Next is the approval of the agenda. By Mrs. Feather. Second by Mrs. Rogowski. And that, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. For the record, we will note that Chairperson Karen Friedman and the Clerk Carrie Smith are absent this evening. First item is the Student Government Activities Report. I'm sure we have somebody. All of them, all right.
Good evening. We are happy to be here on behalf of the Student Government to give our final full-year recap before graduation. This year, we had lots of success in bettering the school and the community. Our efforts started as early as August.
So without the freshman mentor program this year, their role orientation really fell on us. It was our job to greet the freshmen as they walked into school and direct them if they were unsure where their classes were. And one thing I believe worked really well was being integrated with the freshmen at lunch. Mr. Curran from the first day in school and on encouraged us to sit with the kids who I didn't know when to sit with. And he always emphasized the importance of being kind and open with everyone. And it was really crucial to make sure that they had a good first impression of the environment at CHS. And I believe that Student Government as a whole succeeded in helping acclimate the incoming freshmen into the high school.
October contains my favorite week of the year, Spirit Week. Week started on Tuesday. Our theme was Decades Day. Freshmen represented the 90s, sophomores the 2000s, juniors the 70s, and seniors dressed for my favorite decade, the 80s. Our first night activity of the week was Powderpuff, where the girls competed for their class in flag football, with teams being coached by a faculty member of the team's choosing and Athletic Director Mr. Crowley taking on refereeing duties for the night. The boys choreographed cheerleading routines with the help of our high school cheerleaders, formed a halftime school that quite frankly put princes to shame. Wednesday was Adam Sandler Day during the day, and at night, lip sync. The senior group, choreographed by yours truly, not to brag, of course, took home victory. On Thursday, students represented their class by getting decked out in class colors. Freshmen in red, sophomores in yellow to represent our two respective middle schools, while the juniors in white and seniors in blue wore our school colors. Thursday night is the student favorite, Class Clash, which was hosted in the Wellness Center again for the first time post-pandemic. Night consisted of relay races, tug-of-war games, and the always intense musical chairs. Friday marked the school coming together to show Clipper pride, all wearing blue and white and attending the afternoon's pep rally to prepare for that night's football game, as well as announce the very elusive senior sweep that took place for the first time in our high school careers. Sunday's, sorry, Saturday's Homecoming Dance capped off an amazing Spirit Week. Spirit Week's a special time at CHS. The student body demonstrates its spirit for their classes and schools, to inspire students to feel prideful about attending Cumberland High School.
In November, we devoted the most of the month raising money and collecting canned goods. During this time, we had our A1 classes compete to have the most amount of canned goods slash money. After a couple of weeks, a clear victory of the senior stats class raised a cumulative of 700 cans and dollars. Outside of school, we also spent a Saturday afternoon at Ciabro with a truck. Student government members either held posters on the sidewalk, stood outside the truck, or gathered groceries with monies earned. Overall, a fill-a-truck event was a huge success, and when we were done, the truck bed was fully filled with canned goods and turkeys. As a group, we traveled to the senior center to deliver all the goods. Families around Cumberland were incredibly thankful for all our hard work, and the Student Government strives more to raise more and more money and collect more canned goods in years to come.
In December, we adopted about 12 families in the town of Cumberland and each contributed by purchasing both wants and needs for the children and the families. We all signed up for a few items and together covered all the children's wants, needs, plus more. To make it a full event, we split up into teams and had to complete a scavenger hunt provided by the teachers, such as taking a picture with the biggest candy cane, the biggest Christmas tree, or singing a song with the mayor. The last step was to go pick up some food and then meet back at the school. We all then ate, talked, and wrapped all our gifts for the families that we adopted. This allowed us to create an even stronger bonds with all members in our Student Government, as well as realize how grateful we should be for all that we have and continue to contribute to those in need that may need it more than us.
In March, we raised money through Pennies for Patients to contribute to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. We raised money for children with cancer and had a lot of fun in the process. This year, we had in-school dress-up days, America Monday, Tacky Tourist Tuesday, Jersey Day Wednesday, Gold Day Thursday, and School Colors Day Friday. Lastly, for Pennies for Patients, we had in-school donations as well as a donation link. In sum, we raised roughly $4,000, and we want to thank all that contributed.
In late May, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. We made it a priority to honor the teachers and all the hard work they do all year long. The week prior to Teacher Appreciation Week, we set up an appreciation station in the cafeteria. This was open to students in every lunch period during the entire week. They were able to write notes of appreciation to teachers, which would be delivered to them the following week. On the Monday of Teacher Appreciation Week, students from Student Government stocked the copy rooms throughout the school with supplies for teachers such as coffee, candies, and writing utensils. To conclude the week, students stood at the entrances of the school with signs and applauded the teachers as they walked in. It was truly rewarding to see the smiling faces of teachers that worked so incredibly hard every single day.
Thank you for letting us speak tonight and reflect on our successful year. We will greatly miss Student Government as we embark on our future endeavors and look forward to seeing what the future classes accomplish. Lastly, special shout-out to the class of 2023 Advisors, Ms. Davis and Ms. Mercia, as well as our Student Government Advisors, Ms. Rowe and Mr. Curran, for their unwavering support. Thanks again, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Student Government, for all of your work that you've done throughout the year, both on raising money and creating, you know, running events, but also for participating in our school committee meetings. Hopefully, maybe we can get somebody from the Student Government next year, I know that you guys are out, but to act as a liaison to maybe the Policy Subcommittee. We have worked with students before on certain policies. It'd be good to maybe to have continuous activity from you guys. Thank you very much, and good luck in everything in the future. Next is the Consent Agenda. First is the Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting, 5/11/2023. Also, the Special Meeting from 5/16/2023. And the Approval of Minutes from the Executive Session from May 11/2023. Do we have a motion? By Mrs. Feather? Oh, I'm sorry, Rogowski, sorry. Second by Mrs. Vogel. All in favor?
Aye.
The Agenda, the Consent Agenda passes five to zero. Next is the Personnel Amount, oh my God, the Personnel Announcements. Ms. Dresnik.
Thank you. We have two Personnel Announcements this evening. The first is an unpaid personal leave of absence for the 2023-2024 school year. That's Jennifer Goodwin, a special educator at Ashton School. And the second is a resignation effective 7/31/2023 for Dr. Rachel Santa, the Director of Special Services. And of course, we would like to thank Dr. Santa for all of her work with the Cumberland School Department, and we wish her well in her new position. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that Dr. Santa was fantastic over the last several years. It was a great move when she came in. I'll never forget the first time I met her, both as a special education parent and also as the liaison to the Special Education Advisory Committee. I set up a meeting with her, and while I was waiting for her in the outer office, she was on the phone, and I could hear her yelling into the phone, and the only thing I could really pick up was, I'll leave out some of the words, but it was, all she said was, "It's about the kids." And she was on the phone apparently with DCYF, having an argument about how best to help the kids. And that's what she did in her time here, and we wish her luck in our new endeavors, and we will really, really miss her. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening. Tonight, we just have the school construction updates. Without further ado, Mike? First, a lot of work happening at Garvin. In case you don't know, a lot of the windows at Garvin have caulking that is hot, if you will, or has asbestos. Given that, you have to hire the guys in the white suits that come in, and they properly dispose of those windows. So that was happening at Garvin this week. We also tore up the old sidewalk in front of Garvin. That's all been taken care of. The roof is being done at Garvin. We're probably halfway through the first layer. It's a huge roof, so that's underway. And the brickwork is going up on the outside of the new addition at Garvin, so that's moving right along nicely. Inside, a lot of painting going on. We're doing what we can do when we have the openings. We have some spots to paint on the first, second floor. That's being done right now. And once again, this is the old cafeteria. You can see the windows are coming out. That's going to be a classroom space, but that's what it looks like when you take the windows out, just an open spot. The lights are in at Garvin, the new lights, so that's exciting, so those are going to go up. Once again, the brickwork in the front of Garvin moving right along. And the roofers are added. They've really been added all week there. Ashton, we have the exterior lighting going in. Going in all throughout the area. Sidewalks are going in in Ashton. That's taking place. The doors have come in in Ashton, so those are being installed, also the blue trim. Next one, we have the cable going in or the wiring for some of the other tech, so that's happening. The heating systems are going in, the baseboards. That's all happening. A lot of finish work happening. The bathroom fixtures are coming in, toilet, the sinks, the tiling is all completed. Next slide. The lights are actually going up at Ashton. They're installed, so they're ahead of Garvin on that piece. Next slide. Community, they've graded the area since this picture on Monday. I believe they've tarred. I haven't been over there, but I think it happened yesterday or today. I checked that tomorrow. But that's happening. The next slide, that's just the sidewalk piece going in over near the parking lot. And once again, more sidewalks being forward at Community. Inside, this is the kitchen, or what will be the kitchen at Community, and that's all being fireproof. That's happening. The bathrooms are virtually complete as far as the tile work goes over at Community. The doors came in and we painted them. That's the color for the doors. And the cabinetry is going in. That's actually in the music space. That's the room behind the stage. So that's the cabinetry for the music space. Next slide. And that's the end. So essentially, Community on schedule, you know, on budget for the first phase. Same goes for Ashton. Garvin, the main building remains on schedule. The addition still is not entirely on schedule. They'd meet again tomorrow. It was four weeks last time I talked to you, so we'll see if they can then close that gap when we see them tomorrow. Happy to answer any questions on school construction.
I'd just like to say that we had a walkthrough last night at the Building Committee Meeting, and Community School looks absolutely great. The music room, which looks cleaner now than it does in that picture, is a big, really nice, big space. That's going to be great for a music room. Or a DaVinci room, however they are actually going to end up using it completely. But great things coming to the buildings, all of the buildings. I also want to mention that tonight, we were supposed to recognize Tammy Lemieux as the District Teacher of the Year. She was not able to be here tonight, so she will be at our June ACE meeting. We look forward to honoring her. Anything else, Dr. Thornton?
That'll do it.
Okay. Thank you. Next is the Report of Standing Committees. First is the Fiscal Management Subcommittee. Mr. Collins.
The Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this evening. It was actually relatively a quick meeting. We have six resolutions for the committee review and potential vote. There's no payment of the bills. There was no update from Facilities Director, Food Services, so very quick meeting. Wish I had more news. Thank you.
Policy and Procedures did not meet this week. It was very tough with all the budget meetings, the Building Committee Meetings, and other events happening. I did want to mention that Dr. Thornton and I met with Steve Adams and a new associate of Mr. Adams, Ty Palermo, discussing the policy manual overall. And we're pretty much in agreement on a lot of changes that need to happen in the policy manual as far as organizationally, as well as some new policies. So that's, work is going to get done in the next few months, really. So, and Achievement and Communications has not met either this week. And Mrs. Rogowski, has Health and Wellness? Not yet? Okay. As a little update for you, though, one of the parts of the policy manual will be to have a separate section just for Health and Wellness, for all of our health and medical policies, so that they're easier to find. So, next is the comments from the public. There is no one here to speak. Next is New Business. Sorry? First is a discussion and/or vote to approve the RIDE MOA. School Construction, Amendment Number One, New Construction and Renovations and District-Wide Repairs and Renovations. I believe Mr. Collins has this.
I do. This is one of the six resolutions the Fiscal Subcommittee approved this evening. This MOA memorializes what we're spending for each building as part of the $79 million bond. This document reflects money shifted, in some cases, to complete the project, but it's still part of the overall $79 million bond. There's no additional money or anything like that. This is a RIDE requirement. This passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee two to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion. I just want to add one thing. I believe that some of the reason for the money being moved around is the completion of Cumberland Hill. There's some money left over, so that money has been moved, as well as a lot of projects from, like Phase Two, Ashton and Community, were moved to Phase One, so that moves some money, at least of the books. Do we have a second? By Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next is Discussion and/or Vote to Approve the Revised School, I'm sorry. Yes. This is actually, should be under Old Business, so it's just a typographical error, really. It's a Discussion and/or Approve, Vote to Approve the Revised School Construction Timeline. Dr. Thornton?
Thank you. As I mentioned last time, we'll have this on recurrently. You don't have to vote tonight. Just want to give you what I have from last time to this time. Just to recap, when the bond started out, it was really about, you know, safer, warmer, you know, drier. And we increased the scope to like-new standard, à la Cumberland Hill. Last time, some of the members wanted to know a dollar amount. I'll give you an approximate dollar amount, approximately $1.2 million. So essentially, this could be a two- or three-summer job based on the old method, if you will. They estimate labor going up 6% to 13% every summer, not including any start and stopping of the trades. So 1.2 is the benchmark I'll give you. It's not a hard number, but it's a pretty good, good number. 1.2 if you do the multiple-summer protocol, and that will be obviously problematic. So I'm happy to answer any more questions on that, but I know you wanted that number, for one thing. And I know last time, I think Ms. Feather asked the logical question, why in 2018, or whatever that was, was this not thought of? And like I said, I don't have, the only answer I can give you is, the scope back then was less, the scope more is now. But to me, I wanted to bring it to you a couple of years ahead of time, so you can wrap your head around it. So I'm not, we're not springing on you. You have to act on it, right? So as we know, this summer, it's Ashton, right? So we have a long time to kind of wrap our head around this.
I haven't fully formulated my question yet. The, it's around the 1.2 million, really. Just, I'm trying to wrap, I'm glad you gave us time to wrap our head around it, because I'm trying to wrap my head around the idea that just increasing the scope equals 1.2 million. Doesn't, that doesn't feel like that should.
The idea, I guess the theory back then was, since it's only safer, warmer, drier, roofs, heating systems, the theory, I believe, was you could do that in a couple of summers. But now that we're touching every classroom, every ceiling, every cubby, every door, common areas, now you can't do it in the summers. I know two weeks back, when we talked to the construction folks from Albor, they had said, "This is concerning to start and stop, because things like fire alarms, you really can't start and stop a fire alarm system, right? You got to do it." And they would not want to have to open up a ceiling and then close it up for September and open it up again next June, and close it up again. And the whole idea of summer, they call them summer slams, really, we get out June 23rd this year, right? You're starting end of June, you got to finish, you know, before Labor Day, so you can clean up. It's not a long period of time to begin with to do a summer job. It also comes at a higher premium. Summer jobs cost more. But yeah, the 1.2 is just the cost escalation estimate, 6% to 13%, I did 13, right, for two or three summers. First summer being nothing, putting, say you spend $4 million. I should tell you this, Phase Two of Community is pegged at $8.3 million for the new, like-new Cumberland Hill scope, right? If you do make Community like Cumberland Hill, it's 8.3. That's the rough number. So say you spend $4 million the first summer, there's no escalation on that. It's $4 million. The last 4, 3, now we do a part of that, that's 13% on that number, and then the following third summer, another 13%. That's how you get the increase.
So we probably should keep this in mind anytime we think about summer slams in the future, I'm thinking, because we don't want to be slammed.
Yeah, I would say.
I would say, I'm sorry, Dr. Thornton, I would say that at the rate that the state of Rhode Island provides this kind of incentive for renovations, none of us alive will have to be worrying about that.
I would say I'm not a fan of summertime activities like this. Just doing what we did last year, open up Cumberland Hill and the trans, that was a race to finish. I see the same race this year at Garvin. We'll be working over Labor Day, getting that building ready. I'm convinced of that. So I think we need every day to do the work in the summer. That's really a challenge, I think.
And I would just add that there's been so many little hiccups along the way of finding things that we've never expected to find. You know, simple things like drain lines that the state put in someplace that were never accounted for anywhere on any plan. There's also large delays with product. There's also, you know, construction worker shortages. I mean, there's just, and like Dr. Thornton said, it's very concerning to try, it would be very, it'd be great if we could do it. I just don't see it being feasible or realistic. Mrs. Vogel.
Just so I understand this, if we revise the schedule, there's no extra cost, but if we do not revise it, it's the 1.2 million?
That's correct. The estimates are, it'll cost you more if you don't revise the schedule. Like I said, you don't have to act tonight. We know we have Ashton coming up, right? And right, I should say this also, we are taking opportunities to do some of the work at Community over this summer. I wouldn't call it a slam. For example, one easy one to tick off is the Community Roof. So we think we can do that one, just like Garvin's roof. That is a good summer job to do, right? You can see the beginning, middle, and end in that timeframe. But essentially, a lot of the internal stuff, that's where you get into trouble, you start opening up ceilings and knocking down walls, that kind of thing.
Just one other follow-up question. This is a revised timeline. Do you have the original timeline, just so I can put them side by side?
We can email you tomorrow from Cindy, the original timeline.
Okay. Sorry, I just, I couldn't find it. I apologize.
I think we'll give you probably tomorrow the original and the new proposed again, side by side.
All right. Thank you so much.
Even the original timeline changed from when we first started talking about construction to the schedule we've been living the last couple of years, because we moved schools around. So even that may not be 100% clear. It's been a very living experience, so. Anyone have any other questions? Does anyone want to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll motion to table this until the next meeting. We can, it's an ongoing discussion. But we, I think also, this move would potentially, not next year, but the year after, so we are going to have to take this on eventually. But of course, I think I said this at the last meeting, where I was thinking it. We don't all, want to all of a sudden have parents at Community School find out that, oh, by the way. So as we talk about it more, hopefully it gets out there that this is something that we're contemplating, so. Thank you.
So Mr. Collins makes a motion to table to, excuse, Mr. Adams, do we need to actually give a hard date on the table, or can we just say a future agenda?
You could just take no action, so Mr., it might, it would be fine, no offense to Mr. Collins, but you could move, you could just not, just take no action.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. We will, yes, Mrs. Rogowski.
I just want one more clarification. We talk about how this is in the future, and we're talking about next summer, correct? That Community would be moving to, if this were to be approved, next summer.
Summer of '23 is Ashton, summer of '24 would be Community.
A year from next month.
Yes.
So it is not two years down, it's next year. Okay, thank you.
So we will take no action on this item. And we will take it up when we have more information or, or a full, yes, or even a full committee. So next up is the Discussion and/or Vote to Approve the Homeschool Instruction Requests for the 2022-2023 School Year. Motion to approve, there is only one in the, in the, okay, so Mrs. Rogowski, is that correct? And Ms. Feather, Mrs. Feather for the second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero. And now, we come to Discussion and/or Vote to Approve the Resolutions. Mr. Collins.
Thing everybody came for. All right, so we have five resolutions left, SCPI-05, 2023-54 through 58. Five resolutions, all passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee two to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
I just have one quick question. Would you like a second for discussion? Second for discussion? Okay. Mrs. Vogel makes a motion, make seconds for discussion. I just have a quick question. I'm assuming, Mr. Collins, I didn't get a, I didn't read the fiscal note on this, but I'm assuming that the kitchen work is being paid for.
That is, that is coming out of the Food Services budget, yes.
Okay, excellent. In that case, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. And that is for everything. Next, Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Payment of Bills.
No bills, not tonight, next time.
School Committee Comments. School Liaison Reports. Anyone? Mrs. Rogowski.
I just wanted to say that Mr. Ferrero and I, and Dr. Thornton was there as well, had the chance to attend, which is one of my favorite perks, if you may, of being a school committee member, which is attending the distinguished scholars ceremony. And that recognizes the top 10%, instead of just recognizing the top one or two students in a class, it recognizes the top 10% of the graduating class. And it is absolutely one of my favorite things to see all the students recognized and hear about what they've done over the years. And it's really impressive to see the volunteer hours and the community service and the achievements that this class has. It's absolutely incredible. Ms. Dresnik was there as well. But just big congratulations to all of them and to all the graduating seniors. But it was just, it's a wonderful ceremony, and it's really nice to see academic achievement recognized.
Anyone else? I would just like to make mention of a couple of things. The timeline for the budget meetings at the Town Council. Well, tonight, there was a meeting of the Finance Subcommittee. Tomorrow night is the first public hearing. That will take place at 6:00 PM at Joseph Melf McCourt Middle School. The second public hearing and the vote would be at the Town Hall on May 31st. And the final vote is on Wednesday, June 7th, also at the Town Council Chambers over at Town Hall. Tomorrow night is also going to be the discussion on whether or not the Town Council will see fit to approve a bond referendum up for the November ballot for the new construction of BF Norton, the school roofs at the high school, as well as money for replacement of playgrounds at three of the schools. of the schools. So everyone should try to turn out for that, or at least contact their Town Council member to hopefully support this. It's important work that needs to get done. This is all work we would have loved to have done, but quite honestly, there was no path forward at the time when the first bond was passed. And again, the savings that we can experience right now by doing this work this year is, really makes it all the worthwhile, because as we know, Rhode Island does not make this money available very often, and who knows when the next time will be? If not, we will be having a very serious problem with classroom space in this district, as well as other issues surrounding our roofs, our playgrounds, which are not always safe. And quite honestly, there is, the cost of replacing a playground is just astronomical these days. And it is our job to maintain them, but we really need the town to help us to rebuild them. And these are town playgrounds, so it really affects everyone in this town. This is an important bond, and I hope that everybody will turn out to support it. Thank you. Dr. Thornton, I believe we do not have special executive session?
Correct.
In that case, I will look for a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Rogalski. Is that correct? And second by anyone? By Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at 7:38 PM.